In trading. Mark's not here. If you want to grab his chair and bring it down, that way you've got three chairs. That way you can be able to sit down as well. Is that it?
Yeah.
Evening, everyone, to tonight's March 25th City Council meeting. If you'd like to stand and say, "Help me with the pledge of allegiance," and then remaining standing for the invocation given by Reverend Flannoy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Eternal God and kind Father, we we ask you to bless this city council meeting. We ask you to start with our mayor and the city council members, all of their assistants. We ask you to bless our armed forces. Ask you to bless our police department, our fire department, our first responders. We ask for blessings on the citizens of Bonner Springs on tonight. We thank you for leadership. Now we ask for followership from the citizens of Bonner Springs. Let each decision that we make be acceptable in your sight. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Got a couple of proclamations to give out this evening. The first one is to CASA for the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Please come on up. And I'll go ahead and let you introduce yourself. And if you want to talk a little bit about.
I will. Thank you very much. I'm Deborah Lyles with First Judicial District CASA Association. We serve Leavenworth and Atchison Counties. And this is our 30th year in service, serving children and families who children and youth who unfortunately experience abuse or neglect. And our volunteers are trained to advocate for them and make sure they get permanency and get in an environment and a home where they can thrive. So, we'd love to work ourselves out of a job, but if not, we're going to go for 30 more years. So.
Well, thank you. And we'll read a proclamation. Whereas in February, I'm sorry, in federal fiscal year 2022, nearly 3.1 million children received an investigation response or alternative response. And whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Bonner Springs. And whereas child abuse can have a long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects, and have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that most work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, I, Tom Stevens, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Bonner Springs, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves, ourselves, to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Thank you so, so much. Thank you.
Smile for the camera there.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you to the city of Bonner Springs.
Well, we appreciate all the work you do. And now we have one more proclamation to give out, which is kind of a fun one. It is for United Bowling. And would the members of United Bowling like to come up here? Unified, I'm sorry. I did read it wrong, and I know that. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Denise Chowney here real quick and let her kind of introduce everybody.
So we had the opportunity to go to Nationals in Las Vegas and represent the state of Kansas and Bonner Springs in Unified Bowling. So we have Bella Sullivan, Ariana Ortiz, Tracy Ortiz, Matt Braithwaite, that all got to go. We took first place. We also took second place and fourth place and got a special award for being the highest team that beat their average, which was really cool. So there were 17 states there, and I have no idea how many teams. But the kids did amazing. Several of them have never left their parents before and have never traveled on an airplane before. So there was a lot of firsts. We got to do a lot of great things. And so this is for kids with disabilities and without disabilities, and they got to compete together. So it was pretty amazing. And they raised $7,000 in about a month and a half in order to do this trip. So that was pretty cool, too. So thank you to the community for helping them do that.
We appreciate them representing the city. I watched live a few times, and that was a fairly large bowling house, and it was packed, so. So we're going to read a proclamation. Why don't you, I'll tell you what, if a few of the bowlers want to come over on this side, up on this side, and a couple on here. Whereas Unified Sports at the high school interscholastic level is an athletic program that is co-supported by the Kansas State High School Activities Association and Special Olympics Kansas. And whereas since 2021, the Kansas State High School Activities Association has partnered with Special Olympics Kansas to develop and promote Unified Bowling with the purpose of promoting inclusion through shared sports training and competition experiences. And whereas these teams are administered and supported in a manner similar to other interscholastic athletic teams and activities, activity programs in the schools. And whereas Unified Bowling athletes must meet all KSHSAA individually, individual eligibility requirements. And whereas on February 26, 2024, the Bonner Springs Unified Bowling went to the Special Olympics North American National Unified Bowling Tournament in Las Vegas, Nevada. And whereas the Bonner Springs Unified Bowling Team includes, and I apologize if we don't get a name right, Matthew Bratwate, Mackenzie Campbell, Ethan Cook, Raiden Graham, Ariana Ortiz, Isabel Sullivan, Joseph Tolan, and coaches Denise Chowney and Tracy Ortiz. And whereas Matthew Bratwate, Joseph Tolan, Raiden Graham, and Ethan Cook's team won first place and received the Jimmy Schreider Award. And whereas Raiden Graham and Ethan Cook won second place in duels. And whereas Isabel Sullivan and Ariana Ortiz won fourth place. And whereas all of the athletes worked hard and proudly represented Bonner Springs and Special Olympics Kansas. Now, therefore, I, Tom Stevens, Mayor, do hereby proclaim March 25, 2024, as 2024 Unified Bowling Team Day in Bonner Springs, Kansas. I encourage the residents of Bonner Springs to join me in congratulating Matthew, Mackenzie, Ethan, Raiden, Ariana, Isabella, and Joseph, as well as their coaches and families, on their accomplishments. Thank you. Oh, we appreciate you guys representing the city. And we will continue with tonight's council agenda. First of all, we're going to, there is two changes to the agenda. We've added a fourth consent item for a public use request. And then also, we've included a letter of support for the Bonner Springs Senior Housing Villas. So with that said, it is time to move into citizens' concerns about items not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing nobody? We will move on to the consent agenda, which concludes the minutes of the March 11, 2024 City Council meeting, claims for city operations, appointments to boards and commissions, public use requests for the citywide cleanup on 138th Street. Does the staff wish to pull anything? Anybody from the audience? Counsel? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. If the clerk would call, vote.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to new business. The next three items are all connected. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I don't know if we have anybody who's going to want to speak on those. Our first one will be the public hearing to issue industrial revenue bonds for the first phase of BSV LP Senior Housing Project. At this time, ask any, any council members if they've had any ex parte communications. I understand that we have a lot of, a lot of social media and interaction, but what we're looking for is anything that is, if you've had any in-depth discussions or shared any opinions with anyone. So does anybody have anything to disclose? Seeing none, then I would accept a motion to open the public meeting starting at 7:45.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:45 to consider the request for an industrial revenue bond for the first phase of the BSV LP Senior Housing Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Long. With that, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, then it's time to, our public meeting is open. First up would be the staff report.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Megan Gilliland. I'm your economic development coordinator. Tonight, you have before you the consideration of an IRB request and a property tax abatement for a two-phase development for senior independent living with common areas located generally at 132nd and Kansas Avenue. The developer is here tonight and is prepared to make a presentation. And then Tyler with Cootac Rock is here if you have questions about the cost-benefit analysis, which was included as part of your agenda item. The total property tax abatement for this project is a 50% abatement for a 10-year term, and the IRB would provide sales tax exemption on construction materials. And I do want to point out that since this is a senior housing project, there would be no impact to USD 204 with additional school-age children. I stand for questions, or Tyler can speak to the CBA, or you can have the developers provide a presentation.
Okay. Did the developer want to come up and speak at all?
Yeah, sorry. I have trouble getting up here. So I
At least it wasn't me this time.
Presentation. Perfect. There we are. Awesome. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time this evening in allowing us to present our proposed development, Bonner Springs Senior Villas. My name is Matthew Danner, 1440 Erie Street, Suite A, North Kansas City, Missouri, 64116. A lot of people ask, or a lot of councils ask for name and address, so. There it is. So, cover slide, little sneak peek at the rendering. If we can go to the next slide, please. So housing is one of the most visible and tangible characteristics of a community's desirability, with the vitality of any community centering on the quality of its housing stock. Simply put, we believe senior housing is paramount in protecting and growing a community's housing stock, and we believe provides a dual benefit. The first of which is newly constructed units bolster the existing housing stock while, while also freeing up existing homes and units to become available for others. According to the City of Bonner Springs Housing Needs Analysis that was conducted in 2022, there is statistically a shortage of quality housing within the city. That shortage of housing is expected to persist, and additional financial incentives are necessary to encourage the private sector to construct housing within the city. I'd like to direct your attention to the table on the right of the slide. If you look to the bottom, you have the developments that have been designated for senior housing, three of which consisting of 138 units. The most recent, most recently constructed of the three, Nettleton Manor, was constructed in 1979, which is nearly 45 years ago. We hope you agree that it's time for some new and more modern options for the senior citizens of Bonner Springs to live in. Next slide, please. So again, from, from the Housing Needs Analysis of 2022, the senior population of Bonner Springs has increased approximately 60% over the past 10 years, with a, with an average increase roughly of 550 seniors. Continually growing senior population has resulted in many facing the difficult decision to either leave the community to find appropriate housing, or they can age safely and comfortably. 22% of the survey respondents reported they were unable to find appropriate senior housing, while 25% of respondents felt as though Bonner Springs needs age-restricted communities. Nearly 81% of respondents felt rental housing within the price range of $601 to $1,100 per month is most needed in Bonner Springs. We'll address the, the unit rents on, on a subsequent slide. Nearly 22% of Bonner Springs households earn less than $35,000 a year, creating considerable demand for affordable housing. The Bonner Springs Senior Villas development will create 48 quality units and will help to address the availability and affordability concerns of Bonner Springs seniors. Ultimately, the shortage of quality housing is a significant deterrent to future economic growth and the development of any city. Next slide, please. This is the overview of our, our proposed development. The anticipated number of units in Phase 1 is 48, which will be designated for residents aged 55 years and older. It'll be a combination of one- and two-bedroom units, with approximately 710 and 855 gross square feet per unit, respectively. It'll be a three-story interior corridor development with, with an elevator. There'll be an onsite management office to address tenant concerns and leasing. Security and comfort for residents is paramount to us. The building will feature controlled access, a community room for social activities, a fitness center, and is in close proximity to the Bonner Springs Trail. Specific apartment features, apartment features will include energy star appliances, energy-efficient heating and air conditioning, oven range, dishwasher, washer and dryer. Next slide, please. So here you have the estimated net rent range for the one- and two-bedroom units. I broke it down to 30 and 60%, representing the higher and lower end range of, of the units in terms of, of unit rent. So the one-bed 30% AMI would be $350, while the two-bed 450, or four, two-bed 30% AMI units are roughly $400. 60% one-bed AMIs is approximately $875, while two-bed is approximately $975. And below that has the estimated income max for the senior resident. So you can see that, you know, it's really helping people that, that need it, and these are your service industry workers, your healthcare workers, educators, nonprofit and social service workers, the people who've really been the backbone of, of, of communities their entire working career. Next slide, please. So economic benefits for this development are, as Megan mentioned, primarily addressed in the CBA provided to you all, but I'd like to highlight a couple of them. The net benefits, less incentives over the 15-year run is approximately 3.1 million, with the present value of the net benefits over 15-year run is approximately 2.1 million. Currently, the, the property is undeveloped and really does not, you know, have much of a tax base. We'll significantly increase that value. This will also represent a, you know, a pretty considerable capital investment in the City of Bonner Springs. Next slide, please. So here's the conceptual site plan. Phase 1 is, is fronting Kansas Avenue and 132nd Street. To the north are some apartments. Phase 2 will be, you know, obviously after we construct and lease up Phase 1. And so, certainly open to the thoughts or comments that, that you all may have as they, as you think of them on landscaping and access and things of that nature. Next slide, please. So here comes some conceptual renderings from architects. We have fiber cement siding along with a board and batten on exterior articulations with a stone, stone or masonry running the front of the building, first story of the building. Next slide, please. Here are a few more renderings for your viewing. So with that, this is, this is a pretty consequential thing for the, for our application for low-income housing tax credits. The state of Kansas awards these developments on a point basis, typically 10 to 12 per year. Without the, without the city incentives and city participation that these IRBs would represent, it's very difficult to get these developments awarded. These tax dollars are going to get spent on 10 to 12 communities within the state of Kansas. So why not, why not be Bonner Springs and why not get more affordable newly constructed senior housing? Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the citizens who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none? I would go ahead and ask, make a motion to close the public hearing at, you know, sometime here.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing at 7:54.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Mr. Reeves. Vote, please.
Long?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, with that, that'll bring us to item number two now, is a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for the BSV LP Senior Housing Project. I would entertain a motion.
Me again? Uh, where are we? Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for the first phase of the BSV LP project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Ms. Wood. Let's go ahead and we'll start down there with Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, discussion?
Matthew, on, I think that, did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
The, the senior citizen age that you have in there, how did you come up with, with that at 55?
So that's, that's mandated by the state and federal government. It's 55 and older is what's considered senior, and so it's either an election of 55 and older or general population, which is family.
Is this considered, and I, please bear with me on this, I know, know disrespect. Is this low-cost housing?
We like to call it affordable housing, which is kind of, you know, changing the narrative. There's, you know, a stigma for, for affordable rents, and, and people think that means less construction or less quality construction, or, you know, a less, a lesser building that's, you know, constructed. There's, you really won't have any idea as to, you know, what the interior finish is, which are, you know, for the most part, Class A. Anyway, I mean, it, it looks and feels, and everybody will see, you know, a Class A apartment building.
And in your experience with the company you work with and everything, is this, are there any other projects going on that are like this in any other areas or any others that you've completed?
Sure. We actually have one under construction out by the Legends. It's at 11013 Haskell Avenue. It's called Legend Senior Villas. It's a 34-unit, senior 55 and older development. We also have one that's about to begin construction in Alatha.
Now, seniors at 55, I, I know when I reached 55, I thought, hey, you know, this, this is great, but I, I really struggle with that, honestly. That's just me. I, I really struggle with that. I see seniors being more in their 60s. But, and that's no, as I said, no disrespect to you or anything. I know those are federal guidelines. I, I would like to, is there any possibility, Mr. Mayor, or Sean, is there any possibility that we could see the, the page, or the amount of money that is for people to get in? I can't, I'm trying to explain it.
Income requirements.
Yeah, income requirements. Is there any chance we could?
Is that the one you wanted?
Not sure.
Estimate income limits at the bottom.
You want the rate, the rent amounts or the income limits?
Uh, the income.
That's what this is, okay.
So we're at 21 and 24. Now, what is, Matthew, could you please explain to me what the 30, 30% AMI is and the 60% AMI? What are those?
That's 30% of the area median income. So, area median income being the median income of people in the Kansas City metropolitan area. So Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Clay County, Platte County, Jackson County.
So you actually have, well, what is the 60% rate? What does that mean? Because I'm seeing two different things here, and I'm trying to get, trying to get my head around it.
Sure. So 30% would be people that are at the 30% AMI threshold, 60% being people that are at the 60% AMI threshold.
Okay. By a threshold, is that above or below, or is that consistently at 31? We'll say that 30%, which is one person at 21, it's a long way from here. The 21,500, is that the, the entry level, or does that dip below?
So that's the maximum amount a person can make to qualify.
So if someone makes 21,550, then they would pay $350 a month.
Yeah, I, I get that. Thank you very much. Nothing more.
Think of anything else, we'll come back to you, Roger.
Since the 55 age limit is mandated, does it allow to restrict residents under that age? For example, grandparents raising children?
Correct. Yes.
So you would not be in a position to allow those residents?
Correct.
Will you have an onsite maintenance staff person?
We will, yes. And that, the, so being onsite manager, they'll operate normal business hours, Monday to Friday, especially during lease-up, and they'll have, we'll have a, a maintenance supervisor that, that actually goes back and forth between our properties along with others that our property management company employs.
So no one dedicated onsite?
It'll probably
The time will be shared between the local properties?
Yes.
And I was trying to judge from the renderings, is there a breakdown between the size, the number of each size of apartment?
In terms of, yes.
How many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom?
Sorry, yes. It'll, it'll roughly be a 50/50 max. So 24 and 24.
And are individuals who are eligible for subsidized housing, do they qualify for this location? this location?
As in, like, housing choice vouchers?
Yes.
Yes, basically, we, we couldn't, we wouldn't, but we can, also can't legally turn away housing choice vouchers.
Is that a target market for you?
Not specifically, I guess.
Probably can't answer that. That's fair. Okay, two more questions. Will you have storm shelters within this building?
We can, we can certainly discuss that with staff. We had, we've had them in others, I'll say that.
I'd like, personally would like to see those added, if you live in an area that's something we need to provide. And then, do the apartments furnish with age-in-place aids, grab bars, things like that?
Yeah, so we have, there's two types of units, architectural parlance here, type A and type B units. Type A is the fully accessible, type B units are still universally designed, so they have the backing in there for grab bars, you know, in the restrooms that we can install the grab bars after the fact as needed. And we can certainly install more grab bars up front, but in the fully accessible, we have them. And then we have a hearing and audio visual aid unit that is for people with hearing and visual disabilities.
Okay, perfect. So if those fill, you're prepared to install those necessary pieces to meet demand?
Correct.
That's all I have for the moment, thank you.
She covered everything.
Mr. Mayor?
Matthew, thanks for your presentation. It's, it's important that we, we're mindful of those that are getting an age and they need a place to stay, and I think Bonner's a great community to provide housing and from the aesthetics, the buildings look really good. You know approximately what the, what the square footage is per unit?
Yeah, the gross square footage per unit, that's on another slide.
710 to 855.
Yes, so.
855 square feet?
For the twos, yeah.
Yeah. Sounds good. No, I, I really don't have any, you know, these things, a lot of good questions has been brought up and I can't think of anything else. It's just, I know with building codes and a lot of the stuff that Danny was hitting on, most of that stuff's mandatory anyways, so, you know, if I, whoever, whoever takes one of those units probably has the liberty to add those grab bars and stuff. I mean, you're not going to do it unless they need it. It's there for them to do that, so. You said there was an elevator in each unit?
Well, elevator that serves all three floors.
All, all three floors, that's great.
Is it a single elevator?
Correct.
And that's a good area too, right? Got great access to some of the stuff that's going on there, so, shopping or whatever, so, yeah, good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
My questions have been answered, but I echo that. I'm glad that we have a, will have some affordable housing in close proximity to food and shopping and the things that a senior citizen might need. Thank you.
On the 50% tax abatement for 10 years, say the owners sell that at about seven years or so, is that passed on to the new owners?
So we can't, we can't even sell, we can't sell this property for 15 years and more than likely will be with the property for much longer than that. So, you know, you're dealing with myself and my partner Andrew through the life of this development, certainly past 15 years.
Thank you. And actually, what Mr. Reeves was asking kind of leads into what I was going to ask as well. What other projects do you have around the area and what type of longevity as far as how many years you've stayed invested in those properties?
So we have a development at the Legends, Legend Senior Villas, that's under construction now, roughly two-thirds of the way done. We just completed a development and Shawnee, Kansas, is a 42-unit development, and we have one in Alatha that's about to close. I'll let Andrew speak to it.
Yeah, Andrew Danner, my cousin started with me about three, four years ago after he got out of law school. I've been doing this since 2011, 2012. We've developed in Missouri, Kansas, Nebraska and Iowa for affordable housing. We like doing senior developments more than any other developments because we do believe, as you said, it's a, you know, dual benefit there. You're not hurting the, the school districts at all, but you're also freeing up existing units because most of these people really live in the community and they're in a house that they had paid for, for forever, and they can't, you know, get up the stairs and things like that, and we provide that, and they're living on a fixed income, whether it's social security or whatever, and they want to stay close to their families. So we try to go into communities that we work, we've done family developments. We prefer seniors because we think there's more of a benefit that way, and the population's just going that way and it's getting bigger and bigger all the time. And so as far as saving power, we've been doing it, like I said, we've been doing it, we've done 16, 17 developments, sorry, I'm, gotta think back there, 17 developments since 2011, 2012, when I started, and when he came on, we started AMD and have had three projects, one in Nebraska outside of Lincoln, it's under construction right now, and then KCK, Legends over by, what bank is that right there? Country Club Bank, and then we're about to close and start on one. In fact, one of your staff, I think Megan brought up, hey, have you guys looked at the Alatha Senior Villas? We're like, actually, that's our project. And so it was a small world, but that one's about to start construction here next month. We've had a great track record with the housing, oh, agencies in all the states we work in. I think if you ask any of them or talk to anybody, you'll find us to be a good advocate and good partners. We do happen to live on the Missouri side, but we're really close, so.
Well, that's good because stability is always important, I think. Hate to have something just constantly start rolling over with different owners. The restrictions on the, for the income levels, now is that throughout the whole facility or, or do you have so many units that are designated that have to qualify within that, those lower thresholds, but anybody can actually potentially move there? Or do you only, if you are in one of those income ranges?
So essentially, the, the way that these work is there's, not to get too far into the weeds and confuse anybody, but income, there, there's designated income thresholds, 40 at 60, average minimum income, et cetera, and so the way that we have this currently underwritten, there'd be, let's say, eight 30% units, four 40s, four 50s, and then the balance, I believe that'd be 36, balance of it at 60% units. But these will be all at, these will all be 60% unit designated, i.e. anybody, you know, it, it basically just broadens the base of people that can qualify for it. So you don't, you're not specifically, you don't have to look for somebody at a 30% to get to a 30% unit.
And the beautiful thing about the affordable housing is if you qualify for that first year, you can earn up to 140% of that income, so it doesn't box you in, it doesn't, it's not like people saying, oh, I don't want to go get a job or something because I don't want to lose my housing. It grows with you until you make up to 140% of the area median income, you can stay there. And once you make that, you should be able to go get a market rate or home or whatever you, whatever you wish. So it grows with you, and that's the great thing about the affordable housing tax credits. Unlike, you know, HUD and some of their programs that they have is nobody wants to go do it because they're going to lose their housing. And so that's the beauty of affordable housing that we appreciate also.
So if I follow that, if you make above 60% of the AMI, then you do not qualify?
That's correct, at first, at first, yeah. But you, you can, it, it, once you qualify.
Right.
For the first year, when you go re-qualify, because we have to qualify them every year, and it's a stack of papers, this, stack of papers this thick, and our lease is this thick too, and it's all mandated with the state and the feds, and we have to do it, so. And I want to remind everybody, this is an IRS tax program, this is not a HUD program.
And then I might ask, just out of curiosity, based upon what Ms. Gurley was asking about, about the kids, I'm, I have four grandkids, so I know there's going to be a lot of elderly people who will move in there. Do they have visitation rights?
Oh, yes.
So grandkids come over, stay a night, okay. I just want to make sure that I hate to have somebody get in there if they can't, your grandkids can't stay a night, so. Just no permanent guests.
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, on the, on your layout of your apartment, have you given any thought or has to having a exit, automobile exit, going on the east side of the building, going north, in other words, right out onto Kansas Avenue?
We will, we will absolutely take a look at that. I mean, we have not gone into full civil design. I mean, the first thing here is if we can get the support from the city, that makes our application really shine. We believe if we have the support, we'll get funded based upon our track record and how the points lay out, and whoever gets the most points, the community gets it, and these are worth, what, 20 points?
10, it used to be 20 points last year, 10 points this year.
It's 10 points this year.
Nevertheless.
Excuse me, too many QAPs floating in my head. But you get these points and it puts you right at the top or over the top. Last couple of years, we've been very fortunate. We don't like to do this for practice. If you'd asked us to do this in your community last year, we'd have told you, you can't point out. So the QAP changes every year, so when there's an opportunity in your community, because these tax dollars are getting spent no matter what, and they're your tax dollars and my tax dollars and everybody else's because it comes from the federal government, you need to take advantage of it when you can with your community and get those resources, and basically the state wants to work with communities who want to work with them to provide opportunity for housing. So, yes, we will absolutely look at that when we get into it. I kind of roundabout on your question there, you guys are getting an education, education in affordable housing in 20 minutes. Yes, we'll absolutely look at that. The one thing I would want to point out, make sure the traffic study works all right or that the traffic, because you're coming down that hill and your site, your site.
Distance.
Yeah, site distance. I just want to make sure of that. This wasn't, I mean, we thought this through, but I mean, it's, you know, it's not truly designed as it's, you know, as, at the end product, and I will say this, your staff's been wonderful. Your staff will make sure we do everything right, so will the state, and everybody will hang it over their head. We do like the storm shelters, we've put them in every, every one, the last three we've done. It's hard when you're doing more of a scattered site or townhomes or something like that instead of a single building. It's a lot easier to get them in a single building, but yes.
One other question, what would trigger the second phase? Occumacy or being filled for a certain period of time?
So.
Growing funds to build the second phase?
Yeah, so we're turning this in under the Kansas Qualified Allocation Plan as a proposed second phase, like a project that is going to have a second phase. So as long as this one performs and hits the matrix exposed to, after it's stabilized for a year or two, we can apply again, and we actually get extra points for a planned second phase in the Qualified Allocation Plan, but if you don't go in upfront saying there's a planned second phase, that second phase doesn't have to be this exact building, it can be something similar, but it would have to be senior.
Are there repercussions if you come in with a second phase proposed and it doesn't ever come to fruition?
No.
How does this phase one compare to other, the other projects that you're working on?
Very similar.
In terms of size?
Yeah, this is very similar to what we're doing in Alatha. Alatha's 48-unit, same composition, it's just two, two floors instead of three.
Shawnee was 42, we're doing one in Iowa that was 40.
What was the address that, Matthew, that you'd given us regarding the one up by the Legends?
11013 Haskell Avenue.
And then more of a comment than a question because I know that you would tell me what I want to hear at this point in the process. Not a criticism, just a reality. One of our concerns, and we've had experience with rent mandated apartments in this area where the maintenance is not kept up to the standards that the city would like to see. And so that's, I know, been discussed about the, anything that has comes before us. We really need to keep our city welcoming and presentable and maintained, so please bring that to us.
Yeah, so I, I would say this, and I'm not telling you this just because you want to hear it, but the state of Kansas, while we're in the Affordable Housing Program and under the compliance period, we will get a financial audit, we will get a physical audit of the properties and a file audit of the applicants every single year. And they will put it on their proquorum online, it will email us all out, and we will lose our tax credits if we don't make those corrections that they need us to, or, hey, this siding, this rail's a little loose, we need this. They do a unit check on the inside of the units too, so I mean, as far as a good program that provides affordable housing, I mean, it's the only program that's done a good job since 1986 when it was enacted, and it's just got nothing but stronger and better over the last 35-ish year, 40, 40 years, 36 years?
It was 40.
Yeah, so I, I do think they do a good jobs and the state's gotten a lot better at it and everybody's got a lot more skin in the game per se.
Right, thank you, that helps.
Any other questions from anyone else? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk for a vote.
Voting on a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for BSV LP senior housing project? Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number three, which would be the letter of support for the Bonner Springs City Housing Villas. Does staff need to add anything else at this point in time? They go sit down and they may be asked a question. This is now the letter of support. Would any, any of our citizens like to speak to it? Seeing none? I would accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Bonner Springs Senior Villas about application for the senior housing project tax credit application to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wood and a second by Mr. Shannon. We'll go ahead and start down there with Mr. Reeves, see if he has any additional questions.
No additional, but I, I wish that, you, you're taller, until you're farther away from that microphone.
Sorry about that. Trying not to get my head too close to anything. I had an accident at a six-year-old's birthday party playing tag and, on Saturday, so be careful with your six-year-old birthday parties.
Thank you.
No questions.
Mr. Mayor, anything additional?
I don't have any.
Ms. Wood?
No questions.
Real quickly, is, can you explain quickly, I know because as you said right up front, the stigmatism, you know, stigmat of the low-cost housing versus, you know, the, all the different names that come across. What is the difference in how a LIHTC program is handled versus Section 8 housing?
So Section 8, you've got project-based Section 8, which is a lot of the older towers that are by your public housing authorities, that are managed by the public housing authorities, and that's Section 8, project-based, that voucher stays with that unit, so it always stays with that unit. And then HUD realized, well, that's not as, so then they created the voucher that travels around, and I will tell you this, not even a Class A apartment can deny somebody for using a voucher. Okay, nobody can, that's illegal federally. What they get around it is, you know, hey, they add all kinds of requirements, financial and different things like that, so they can deny for a different reason. I'm not saying people do that, I'm saying that's, you know, but that voucher can go anywhere, and unless you're a landlord with three or less units, you cannot deny it. If you have three or more units and they hit your qualifications per what you have out there, you have, you have to take the voucher. So that's when Matthew was hesitating to ask, is we legally can't if they do come and they hit our qualifications and, and do it? You know, and that voucher works just like it does anywhere else, it pays a percentage of the rent and then they pay the rest. However, most of the people that are coming into doing these are, I mean, we don't have a lot of that, but we welcome them if they can because, you know, they need a nice place to house too, but the LIHTC, the great thing about the LIHTC is you can grow out of it. You know, you can, you don't, you're not stuck making the same thing, and it's just a lot more flexible. The program has changed in a beneficial way for the last 34 years, six years, 40 years, as you said, and it's just a better, it's a better program, and it's, and it's because of public-private partnership, and it truly is, because it's the private capital building these, and the federal government has the recapture all the way. If we're in year 10 and we're not compliant, they can take our credits back from year one. So the incentive, I mean, it's a stick and a carrot, and the private-public partnership is what makes it different and what makes it better. If, if that answers your question in a reasonable way there, did I?
I think so.
Did I circle around it? I, I thought I kind of answered it.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I would accept, I'm sorry, roll call, please, vote.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hopefully you'll be able to work with the planning department and maybe be able to start turning some dirt in the near future.
We'll find out what, in, in July, they'll make the decision, but we're, hope we're here.
Okay.
How long before you can turn dirt once you've been notified?
That's, that's the tough part. How quick can we get a building permit? No, I'm kidding. No, I mean, literally. No, I mean, literally, they, they won't let us close without a building permit. So, you know, you got three, four months worth of architectural and civil engineering, then you got the staff time to get through their stuff. So I mean, however long we can get that done, and we won't start, we can't start doing anything until after the award. So, I mean, the goal is to be starting in February or March of the following year, if at all possible. Doesn't always work out that way. If you can get it done faster, great, but the winters sometimes aren't worth doing it early. But, I mean, it behooves us to get it done as quickly as possible, I will say that.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Looking forward to you being here in town.
Technically, we already are. We built the Sherwin-Williams here in town, too.
Oh, we are.
The Sherwin-Williams.
You just got some brownie points from this one here. Okay, on to item number four. Governing body policy approval for purchasing policy updates. Staff?
Yeah, the city has purchasing, purchasing policy, which is generally kind of goes through and qualifies how purchases are made by different departments. And the last time this was updated was actually in 2019. So the most notable change, as you'll see on the attached red line and then the final document, is that the threshold is changed from a $5,000 threshold to a $15,000 threshold for department heads to get a PO or purchase order. So this is, this is meant to be a little bit more of an empowering change for department heads as far as their ability to work within their, work within their budget. A few other clarifying changes in there as well in terms of just processes. But, but generally speaking, it's, again, the major changes, that, that five to fifteen thousand. Happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Any of our, I'm sorry, any of our citizens wish to comment on it? I know I keep asking, and it's pretty much staff out there. But with that, then I would accept a motion.
I make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
You got the limelight, Ms. Woods, go for it.
Well, okay, I'll talk and teach your voice.
I make a motion to approve the governing body policy GB nineteen oh one R updating the city's purchasing policy.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. and Ms. Woods and a second by Mr. Shannon. Any, we'll start right here with you, Mr. McMahon. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I don't have any.
Ms. Wood?
I was impressed with the detail in that, you know, and who, who applies things and who doesn't, yeah.
Nothing here.
No questions?
Mr. Reeves?
Nothing else.
I've got nothing myself, so with that, we'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call the vote.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes, yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number five, bid award for firefighter protective equipment. Staff, report on this one?
Chris Jennings with the Bonner Springs Fire Department Deputy Chief. We are here today for, we put out a bid award for a grant award that we received. In 2021, we submitted for firefighter protective gear. It's one of the most expensive things we have on a regular basis for us to purchase. No secret that the, the world of fire is always changing. You've probably seen some YouTube videos with battery cars and everything else out there, but also the toxins out there that we deal with on a daily basis has changed dramatically. The gear that we have dates back quite a while because of the costs associated with it. On average, it's costing about seventy, eight thousand dollars to equip a firefighter today just from head to toe with just the structural gear. Has nothing to do with the EMS side, tech rescue, or any of the other areas of responsibility that we have. The Assistant to Firefighter Grant Program that's out there was a grant that we had put in for. It's a very competitive grant across the country. We were able to record it, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, or, sorry, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars from the grant, of which our contribution from our city share is approximately, I think, four thousand dollars approximately for that. That's a pretty sizable investment into our department, into our protective gear that will allow all of our new hires that we just saw here last, last session to actually be able to be equipped with modern gear, getting us back to a point of compliance. We put out a bid, of which we had a bidder offer a competitive bid to us. I will say, although we only see one bid there, there was some criteria in that bid that really pushed a lot of vendors out because of their inability to manage the gear over the life cycle. One of the changes we're really looking at because of the cost of this gear is what is total cost of ownership? And that has to do with the damage that the gear receives. Is it repairable? Do we have servicing centers that can do it and reissue that gear back to us while still maintaining that complacency? And that was done with our local vendor through Globe Manufacturing, which is one of the largest manufacturers of firefighter turnout gear globally. And there is only about four or five true manufacturers of gear, so it's not a very big market for that, although there is a lot of gear out there. At this point, the grant, oh, there is a PowerPoint there. There we go. Sorry, if we just go through real quick, through the slides here, obviously, what, what the gear is for. We'll go to the next slide, make this real quick. A lot of our gear is more than ten years old, and we'll go to the next one. This is one of the big important slides. This is just our turnout gear from head to toe. As you can see, that's a pretty significant cost when you're trying to equip twenty-one full-time firefighters plus our part-time staff. We'll go to the next slide. This is the condition of the gear we're currently in. Several sets of our gear right now, as you can see, has some pretty significant wear, and it's at the point that it's outside of the ten-year NFPA requirement. So this is a pretty critical purchase for us, and this grant is a fantastic vehicle to do this and offset some of our costs, allowing us to redirect some of these funds into some of the major apparatus, training, and other equipment needs we have as we try to keep up with the kind of rapid pace of growth around here. Next slide. This is the grant, we'll go to the next slide, go one more. And, sorry, can we go back one? And we'll just point out the, the cost benefit one more time. Go back one. Nope, good enough. So anyways, the, that's, sorry, that, that's our share there. Our city share is five thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars, of which ninety-five percent federal share that we're offsetting through application for that grant.
Thank you, Major. Or Deputy Chief, sorry. Is there anybody from the residents who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the purchase of firefighter protective equipment from Conrad Fire Equipment for the total amount of, oh, it's got numbers, one hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred.
Two hundred. Second.
Want to throw in English, Chief?
We have a motion by Ms. Woods and a laughing motion by Mr. Shannon. We'll go ahead and start here with you, Ms. Long. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I have no questions, concerns, or comments.
Okay.
I, I'm just glad to see that your federal governments are coming in with as much as they are on this. Cities want, they're five or six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Mr. McMahon?
Chris, thanks for all your dedication and just pass that on to the rest of the guys and staff. It's how important, I mean, it's so important to have proper equipment, right? And, I mean, it only makes sense to support what you guys are doing, especially for the safety of those people. Most people run from fires and these guys are going in, right? So, yeah, we want the best for our guys here in town, so, thanks.
What he said.
Is this a grant that you identified and applied for?
Sorry, what was that?
Is this a grant that you identified?
This is one of them, yes.
How many, much have you brought in in grants since you've been here?
A fair amount.
That's amazing, thank you.
He's the grantmeister.
He is a grantmeister. So does each firefighter have a single set of gear?
Yeah, the turnout gear today is a little different than some of the stuff previous years. So, so it actually has to be fitted for the firefighters. Certain amount of movement we need to maintain while not making sure that we don't have exposures for a lot of those toxins. Obviously, the, the cancer rates in our job unfortunately are very, very high, as well as a lot of the trauma exposures from heat, steam, and everything else that we deal with.
So do you have a couple of extra sets just?
Uh, so that, no. So one of the things the grant does not supply is a secondary set of gear, and, and that's a very cost prohibitive item. What we are looking at is trying to get some standardized gear sets that are relatively close and have seven or eight of these that we can cycle through. So once, anytime we have an exposure in the field, which is basically any fire these days, that gear is getting essentially decon immediately off of, if not even red-bagged at scene. We have extractors at the station, which are designed to remove a lot of those carcinogens out of the gear. But that process to turn the gear from exposure back to line service is probably about twenty to twenty-four hours. You would think firefighter gear dries fast, and it, it does not do well against heat. So we actually have to dry them at very low temperatures. It's designed to take flash heat very well, but constant heat of a dryer will actually destroy the gear, which is kind of ironic.
So if someone were, if someone had to send their gear for repair, are they then off-call until it comes back?
Uh, so Globe actually has a program, an exchange program, where they can actually send out essentially leased program gear if there's any extended repair. That's one of the advantages of Globe, is that they do have some of these programs. That was one of the reasons we didn't see a lot of applications from some of the other vendors, is that criteria in there. We actually left the spec very open when we put it out. We said black turnout gear. That was basically about all it said, must meet modern certifications. We left out any particulars in that bid with the exception of the ability to sole-source maintenance and managing that, the service life of that gear for its tenure.
And you said they'll service it through the entire life at no additional cost to us?
What's that?
They'll service the gear for its entire life?
Uh, anything that's manufacturer warranty, so rips and abrasions, if, if there's a penetration of the gear, they have the ability to, to do the repairs where they can actually take out the entire sectional seam, seam work of it. And, and that's a pretty big deal, is what will be a couple hundred-dollar repair versus, you know, several thousand dollars worth of gear.
Thank you.
Your equipment has changed.
It has, very much so.
This is, this is great to see it, Chris. Thanks for all you do.
Real quickly, I want to thank you for all your efforts in securing the grants over the years, including this one. I'll be honest with you, it's a lot easier sitting over, up here, residing over something like this rather than attending, going to a hospital or something worse. So we definitely need to make sure our firefighters are properly protected. So if there's no other comments or questions, concerns, I will go ahead and ask the clerk, oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make one mention there. I, I believe it was read up to, or, or sorry, for the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred. We probably should have that up to for Conrad. There may be very specific items of that, which are sourced from one of the other vendors, such as gloves or, or some small incidentals. So, so that may want to read up to the amount for Conrad.
Okay, who made the original motion? Would you, would you like to amend your motion?
The resolution will amend the fire chief to move forward with the requisition of modern compliant turnout gear in the amount of a hundred, up to, up to.
One hundred and sixteen thousand.
Hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred.
And who, and I think Mr. Shannon, you made the second amendment. Okay, is that all you need, Ms. The Clerk? Okay, with that, then let's call for the vote.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And before you leave the podium, real quickly, I just want to let you know that kind of, got a great example of the auto response last week. Since I live out that way and I watched the units come rolling into the fire on Bluegrass, and I had, saw many people commenting going, I didn't know we had much, that much equipment, and started talking about all the different entities that were there. Edwardsville, KCK, so it was great to see such a great response from the auto.
Not only a benefit for the citizens in terms of operational capacity, and something you could never afford organically. The level of safety provided to our firefighters there with, with that resource level on scene is night and day difference. Cowboy days are long behind us.
Just want to let you know I saw it in use.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. That, on to item number seven, or six, I'm sorry, elect the council president, if you dare do that.
Okay.
I guess I'll just announce this one. Basically, I'm putting forward the nomination of Mr. Shannon to be our council president. If, unless there's some other issues, somebody else that would, you'd like to nominate, I would then ask for, if not, I would ask for a motion to elect Roger Shannon to the council position. Council president position.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to elect Roger Shannon to the council president.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Ms. Gurley. Any comments, concerns?
Good choice.
With that, then I would ask the clerk for a vote.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
No, no, I'm kidding, yes.
Motion passes.
And then on to our next item, item number seven. Basically, the same thing for the mayor pro temp position, and I'd like to put forward the nomination of Mark Kip for the mayor pro temp position. If there's anybody else that would, would like to nominate, you can. Otherwise, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Mark Kip as mayor pro temp.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Woods. Unless there's any comments, concerns? We have one by Mr. Reeves.
He knows about it, right?
Yes, he's, it wasn't a case of if you don't show up, you get elected.
Hard to be pro temp if you're not here.
With that, then I would ask the clerk to call the vote.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we have to go into an executive session now. Do you have a specific time you think we'll be returning?
Nine.
Nine o'clock even. So I would accept a motion, and you'll have to read it as listed showing there.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters pursuant to the exception for consultation with an attorney, KSA seven-five dash four-three, one-nine-B-two. Regular session will resume at nine o'clock PM.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Mr. Shannon. I'll just call for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, with that, the chair recognizes that, well, if everybody is seated, I would accept a motion to come back out of regular session.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we return to regular session at nine oh two with no action taken.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Mr. Shannon, a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We're in the chair, the ayes have it. Gee, that finishes our regular. I don't know who that was. That finishes our.
It's Chris. No, I'm not doing any.
And with that, we'll move on to reports. Got Cindy Manger report up first.
Okay. You know, just really quickly, the Kansas Culverts, I think we're, just to refamiliarize, there are a couple Culverts on Kansas Avenue as you kind of approached, the Lay Valley subdivision that are going to be slip-lined, which means that basically they're going to go in and cure in place, is kind of like that. That will actually start on April fifteenth. That'll be a couple months to do that, so there will be some, some impacts there. But again, the reason we're doing it, the way that is being done with this slip-line is to help decrease the, the traffic impacts in terms of the full closure of the street or partial. So, again, that will, that will start on April fifteenth, dependent on weather. Second one, June fifteenth, the C-Clip, which is a program through the state that will kick off on, on June fifteenth. That will be Camp Avenue, so that, that coincides with school being out, but we will be resurfacing Camp. Good portion of it basically from the Nettleton to the, the boundaries that say. Do want to just point out, and, and those in attendance before the meeting were able to take a look at it, but we did finally receive, our dump truck for the Public Works Department was, was out. And then also, our new loader actually showed up today. So these are two great pieces of equipment to help out. Our, our public works staff is into the new year. And then finally, I just want you to all be aware that this is somewhat new news. NPR oversees our, helps with our insurance, medical insurance. For the second year in a row, the board, we, we actually were able to approve insurance without any rate increases. So this is, again, two years in a row at zero percent increases in terms of the cost of insurance. There's some slight changes because of. in terms of the cost of insurance. There's some slight changes because of plans in terms of requirements at the federal level. So the deductible went to 1,600, I think was, or went up $100. So that, again, some minor plan changes, but again, overall, great news as far as that's concerned. So we will be making sure that the employees are aware of that, and then kicking off our, our health, our medical insurance renewals here in the next couple weeks. But beyond that, that is all I have this evening.
Okay, then moves on to city council items. We'll go ahead and start here with you, Mr. McMahon.
Just, real quick, Jean and I were, I'm sorry. My wife and I were out on a Sunday cruise, yesterday, right? And
Yeah.
If you get to be my age, the retirement homes over there, the new ones are going to be built. That's probably right for me. But I just, you know, and Sean and Credit, you know, our public utilities are, the roads are good in Bonner for the most part. And just driving around, and I, and I mean what I say, right? I mean, we're, we're out in the country, and we might hit a couple gravel roads, but we might have been in another county, too, for that part. But that's good. Kudos for what the city's doing for, you know, when I came onto this position, it was about good roads and clean water, right? And I think we're doing good at both of those. And then I got to go to, I don't think it was a ribbon-cutting ceremony, but they, the baseball, the ball fields and the tennis courts for Bonner Springs, got invited by Emily. And man, I would have played baseball in high school here in Bonner if I grew up in this area, if they had those kind of fields. Jeez, old peaks. They're nice. A lot of money went into it. And I hope we have at least a 500 season every year going forward with that. But there was a lot of people down there. I could see the mayor and others that were there, and there was a buzz and a lot of excitement. So, you know, Bonner's growing, right? And these gentlemen that were here earlier talking about helping out with the Sherwin-Williams, I've been in the Sherwin-Williams, and Jeff is the manager there, and I said, I'm putting a lot of emphasis in connecting with the community and how important it is, right? These guys are from Sean E., they manage others, other areas, and they haven't been in a town. He's never experienced this where, you know, Chambers is trying to get ahold of him, the bank came over to speak with him, and it's more than just selling paint to clients. It's rooting into the community, and that's, that's great. And, yeah, but that's it. I could talk forever, but I won't. But that's it for me.
We received an email about River View today.
Oh, yeah.
Uh-huh. Sorry down there, Bob. We received, we received an email about the River View status down at 110 today. I don't know if you've received it as well. I think everybody got it.
A lot of us need to forward it.
The council got it, so I'll forward it. Can you speak to the status of that right now? It included a lot of pictures of the mudslide and the possibility and things of that nature.
Yeah, the torrential rainfall last week.
It was from the 13th and 14th.
I can't, I know that the city engineer was out there, I believe, last week. But that's, like I said, I can't talk intelligently about kind of where...
That's supposed to be done by the end of April, correct?
Yes.
As part of that agreement with
Yeah. And I think it's, it's, it's pretty close. But again, I'll have to talk with Frank and maybe get an update in the next council packet.
You want to go ahead and forward that?
I just did, yep.
Okay.
Maybe, we'll see. It won't go, it's too big. I may have to send it from home. I think that's all.
Are you done, Ms. Gurley? And Mr. Shannon, do you have anything? I think she was passing it off, and I think she decided to
I said, no. She goes, oh. He didn't have anything.
You have anything? Okay. Ms. Long?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Reeves?
I don't either.
Okay, you've got my report. On to the mayor's report. You've seen it. Couple things I thought might mention is, yes, I was at that ribbon-cutting first pitch, whatever you want to call it, at the athletic facilities. And what was really nice is it was the representation by not only Bonner, the mayor of Edwardsville, Mayor Carolyn Kehard was there, as well as elected official, UG Commissioner from UG 7, Chuck Steitz was also in attendance. And it was nice to see that it wasn't just Bonner, elected officials and community members, it was from the other areas that the school district serves. Also, I don't know if you guys saw the Facebook posting this week, but we need to recognize K-9 Cheeko and, you know, that guy, that kind of sidekick, Sergeant Bargerstock. They were certified for the detection of fentanyl through the National Police K-9 Association, and they were the first team in Wyatt County to achieve that. So I want to make sure we recognize them for their accomplishments. And with that, if anybody's got anything else, questions at all? Oh, I'm sorry. Need to have a motion to adjourn the city council meeting at 9:11. 9:01? I got 9:11. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Ms. Gurley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? An opinion of the chair? The ayes have it. Good evening, everyone.